It's called to order at seven ten. This meeting of the planning board of the city of Trenton is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 104-6, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Notice of this meeting has been posted on the city's website, sent to the official newspapers of the planning board, and posted at a conspicuous location at City Hall as provided by the... shall we give a vocal call, please?
Charles Romanow?
Present.
Randy Baum?
Present.
Jonathan Connor?
Present.
Katy Dominguez?
Present.
Jeff Halpern? Marcus Green? Joseph Harrison? Patricia Nima Mohammed?
Present.
Anthony Santora?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. First on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have minutes from January 11th to approve. Does anyone... or in attendance was everyone but Jeff. That makes it easier than listening. Anyone have any comments on that? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes. Motion to approve, second.
Thank you. Cherry, can we have a vocal call?
Yes. Charles Romanow?
Yes.
Randy Baum?
Yes.
Jonathan Connor?
Yes.
Katy Dominguez?
Yes.
Patricia Nima Mohammed?
Yes.
Anthony Santora?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, a realization of resolutions. George, do we have any resolutions?
Mr. Chairman, we have one, and that's Resolution Number 2024-9, prepared in reference to the application made by Mohan Life LLC. And the property is 28 South Orange Street. They came before the board seeking a conditional use permit for the purposes of operating a Class V cannabis dispensary. They do meet our ordinance. The boards have found and granted the conditional use permit.
Okay. We need to vote on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So, motion.
Thank you, Leah and Katy. Cherry, can we have a vocal call?
Charles Romanow?
Yes.
Randy Baum?
Yes.
Jonathan Connor?
Yes.
Katy Dominguez?
Yes.
Patricia Nima Mohammed?
Yes.
Anthony Santora?
Yes.
Okay. Moving along. Next, announcements. Any announcements? No announcements? Okay. And Cherry, can we hear item number one?
Item number one, presentation Trenton Climate Resilience Plan. The city of Trenton has released a draft resilience, resilient New Jersey climate resilience plan for public comment. The plan can be found at HTTPS, golden double backslash B R S I N C dot com backslash resilient hyphen NJ hyphen Trenton. BRS Inc. will present this plan to the planning board, including elements of the vulnerability assessment and recommended actions to address risks. Spanish language translation will be available at the meeting. Members of the public will have the ability to ask questions and provide feedback. Public comments can be submitted to info@brsinc.com by March 1st, 2024, on this evening of Thursday, February 15, 2024, at 7:14 PM.
Thank you all. I'm here today to introduce Lea Yessencheck and Alisa Gorin from BRS as our consultants for the development of the climate resilience plan for the city of Trenton. We've been at work on this plan for getting close to two years now. We are finally reaching the end of it, of this planning process, and that involves our last public engagement as part of that process. We are looking forward to presenting to you the whole list of what we've done, a little bit about our vulnerability assessment, the actions that we are recommending in the final planning process. This plan is funded by the New Jersey D E P through their resilient New Jersey municipal action municipal, municipal program. And that is, and that funding comes from the, from NOAA Section 309, as a mitigation, NOAA Section 309 funds. I would like to disclose to the board that I will be leaving to the city of Trenton shortly, and I will be moving to BRS. I had been advised by the Ethics Officer of the American Association of Certified Planners that I did nothing unethical, but I should disclose these relations every time I have engagements between the city of Trenton and BRS. So that's what I'm doing. Disclose, 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 and a vocal call. So with that, I know this and the board members have wanted to do disclosures as well, and then we'll move on to Leah and Alisa.
Thank you. My dear.
I thought you were going to disclose something.
Oh, no. You're so, you're so.
No, I need to disclose, and I'm employed by BRS and have been for roughly 10 and a half years now.
So, it's Mr. Baum for the record. And I think we have other disclosures. Mr. Dominguez, did you want to disclose?
Yes, I just wanted to disclose that the organization that I'm working for is also working on a similar plan with the Watershed Institute. So I don't know if that's relevant or not.
So not this, what would it be, Michael, a group organization?
It's not this, it's not this specific planning process and not this specific plan. So I don't, so I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a tension in the plan, and I don't think there's any problem with her eventually voting on this plan. But Katy wanted to disclose it, and I thought that would be appropriate.
Are we ultimately going to vote on something?
Eventually, the goal is to adopt this as an element of the Trenton 250 master plan. We're not voting on anything tonight, however.
Okay. Yeah, well, that, Randy, I'm sorry, but if we're going to eventually adopt this into the master plan, and you are employed by the entity, then you would have a conflict. I know we spoke earlier informally, and I said that you didn't, because I didn't think we were doing anything. I thought we were just hearing a presentation, which we often do, on one topic or another. So Randy, you would have to recuse yourself. So, but Katy, you, you wouldn't?
Recuse myself?
You don't have a direct conflict, and if the organization doesn't have a conflict, then, then I don't think that would be a problem. Randy, what's your? Did you want to discuss that?
I'm not, no, my question was, would I recuse myself when we take a vote or recuse myself immediately?
Well, yeah, you have to recuse yourself in, in the, in the process, because there may be questions, you may have questions. Your comments could influence other board members, that kind of thing. So we don't want to taint the process.
So I'm recusing myself as a board member, same thing, so I have to, like, be free to...
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, but that is correct, and I believe we have more, otherwise we have five members, so it will not affect tonight's presentation.
Don't give any looks that will influence the board.
Yeah, Randy, and of course, you're, you, you don't have to leave the room. You just will not deliberate as a board member.
No secret sign language, no?
No, all that stuff goes out the window.
We are recording right now. I'll remind everybody.
Well, for the record, we actually do not have any secret sign language.
Okay. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Leah and Alisa.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to discuss this.
Can you speak closer to the mic? Thank you.
Do a song and dance. So my name is Alisa Gorin, and I have been the project manager of BRS for this project.
And I'm Lea Yessencheck. I'm the principal in charge of BRS for this project.
As Michael mentioned, this is a NJD E P led effort, and they have determined sort of the scope and the approach for this. We've worked closely with Michael and our project partners, which we'll go into.
My name's super hard. So first name is Leah, L E A H, A H. Last name Yessencheck, Y, A, S is in Sam, E N as in Nancy, C H A K.
And my name is Alisa, A L I S A. Last name Gorin, G O, R E N. Okay. So I believe in '22, we presented that we were going to be doing this project in July, and gave you a little bit of an overview of what we were going to do. And now we're here to tell you what we have done. So just to refresh everyone's memory, our scope involved the first step of doing background research, reviewing, planning documents, all of the data collection for, for the city. There was a community engagement process that spanned the whole project, where we had public meetings, key stakeholder interviews, community tours, surveys.
Community conversations around the island.
Yes. And then we did a vulnerability assessment, which is actually many other words and letters that we will explain later, but for shorthand, we're referring to it as a vulnerability assessment. Then through that process and identifying the areas that are most vulnerable in the city, we identified and developed actions that we believe will help address these vulnerabilities. And with those actions, developed the resilience action plan, which is what I believe you've been given links to and access to. So, as Michael mentioned, this was funded by the, a NOAA grant and implemented by the NJD E P. For our project team, we had BRS, us, New Jersey Future, Princeton Hydro, WRT, and RPA, the Regional Plan Association. And so we all worked collaboratively and worked on different elements of this project. So, in terms of the tasks that we've completed, so the first task and the data collection was in summer of '22. Public outreach has been going on throughout the process. The vulnerability assessment was completed in the fall of '22, and we had a public meeting reviewing the findings last November, February? Sorry. And then that led us into the action planning process, and we had another public meeting where we went over the different actions and tried to develop and understand the prioritization that community members had for different actions. As Michael mentioned, this being an element of Trenton 250, we used the vision and the goals of the document of Trenton 250 to guide the goals and the vision for this process. We had several vision conversations as part of our public outreach effort, but believe that the goals of Trenton 250 very closely aligned with what should be the goals of vulnerability assessments, that climate change impacts don't interfere with those goals. And I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention that we are presenting everything verbally, but a copy of the presentation that would accompany what we're discussing will be posted on our website, so don't be additional visual tools.
So, and just to also say, the website contains detailed information on, in English and Spanish, on all of the public engagement activities that occurred as part of this process. So that's all available online as well.
And as well as maps that are attractive, that people can zoom in and out of. So for the scope of the vulnerability assessment, the climate categories that were required to be evaluated were coastal impacts, precipitation, temperature, and drought. So one of the, early on, we realized that because of Trenton's location and impact of sea level rise, that really sea level rise was not as critical a concern, and a lot of our flooding analysis focused on precipitation, extreme weather storm events. And so we overlaid those protections with where the impact analysis landed. So we looked at critical infrastructure, community assets, land use and zoning, rural populations, ecological resources. And for flooding, we considered the FEMA zoning AE, which is the 1% annual chance flood, also known as the 100-year flood-based flood. We also utilized the FEMA risk map process, which was a process that FEMA conducted with local leaders and, and the city to identify other areas where there are flooding impacts that may not show up on a FEMA map. And also developed the flood vulnerability planning areas, which were, which are based on New Jersey flood hazard areas. So the FEMA-based flood, 100-year flood, or 4% flood elevation plus three feet, to identify the projected area that could be impacted by future flooding.
And that's based on current D E P regulatory requirements. And in the handout that you have, you have a copy of those maps, so you can kind of follow along with what we have done in terms of the map. We provided you with a very slim sample of, you know, some of the highlights, yes, but the online version of the full map package is all fully turned out and fully analyzed.
Yeah, and then the first map that you, we probably look at, right, is the map flood areas. So, you have color, right? Yeah, perfect. So the blue areas are the flood zone AE, the 1% chance flood, and then the yellow area is the, the flood vulnerability planning areas. And the hatch areas are the areas that were identified in the FEMA map risk map process. So as you can see, the areas that were originally thought to be at risk, just using FEMA maps, were greatly expanded through this process. So all of the areas that are shaded yellow or blue are potentially at risk for flooding and increased water inundation, which then sort of created an additional guidance for our team to understand where, what is located in those areas, how are we going to identify vulnerable populations, and how are we going to make sure that our planning process addresses these vulnerabilities. So the other handout that I believe you have is just a very brief excerpt from the climate change hazard vulnerability assessment, the CCRHVA, which is posted on our project website. And we wanted to sort of run through the big takeaways of the analysis for the different areas without going into great detail, because all of that is available, and all of that are available online. So we wanted to talk about sort of impacts of land use, land cover. So the, as you can see, there is a, an increase, as you can see on the map, there's an increase in flood areas and specifically affecting when you were residential, commercial, and urban lands across different categories. So, let me see, sorry. So there was an increase of, okay, I'm sorry. So as, as the commercial, the residential area went up 182%. In the vulnerability area, commercial mixed use went up 161%, industrial went up 118%, recreation 96%, and then other urban land went up 70%. So it's a pretty significant increase in areas that are going to be impacted. So the residential area, I guess, is, is in the new floodplainer nearly triple, impacting a lot of residents. In terms of zoning, a similar increase, so residential went up 172%, and this is using the new land ordinance that was recently adopted. Commercial mixed use went up 154%, and special purpose, sort of like transitory and open space areas went up 52%, with an industrial 35. So under these future scenarios, there's a huge impact on over 143 acres of residential zones. In terms of open space, so one of the elements of open space is its opportunity to serve as a mitigation area for flood areas. And so, in fact, some of the areas that are currently in the yellow are in the Aspen Greenway, which has done a lot of work to...
In the East Trenton neighborhood here, we have been acquiring, the, the city of Trenton has been acquiring properties, demolishing old industrial buildings, remediating in, in anticipation of creating a new Aspen Greenway park and recreational area that is floodable and will also serve as flood storage areas during precipitation events. So the area in East Trenton and the North Ward that shows increased flooding, much of that is actually in the area that is going to be, that is the Aspen Greenway. So, you know, the city's done a really good job to date of identifying that risk and, and putting in mitigation factors to address that in, in that neighborhood.
So there's, in the main report, you can see which parks and which areas are going to be increasingly inundated, but I won't go through that list now. Another very important element of this entire process especially is understanding the impacts on overburdened communities. So New Jersey, the state of New Jersey identifies areas that are overburdened communities if they meet certain criteria. So at least 35% of households in the community qualifying as low income, at least 40% of residents identifying as minority or a member of a state-recognized tribal community, and at least 40% of the households having limited English proficiency. So Trenton is unique in that the entire city is classified as some form of overburdened community. And so the impacts that this increased vulnerability area is going to have is significant. So there's going to be 57% increase for areas that are both low income and minority, and 25% increase for minority communities. And this is in terms of acres of the cities, not necessarily population, because of the way that the data is organized by census tracts. Additionally, there are several public subsidized housing projects and complexes that are going to be impacted in the flood planning vulnerability, in the flood vulnerability planning area. And that brings us to critical facilities, which I believe is one of the maps you have. So critical facilities are, and infrastructure are critical to the health and welfare of the population, especially following hazard events like a major storm. So examples include hospitals, fire stations, law enforcement, transportation infrastructure, water supply, emergency shelters. So in general, it's best to locate critical facilities in the areas with the least impacts. But as you can see on the map, there are some significant facilities located in not only the AE zone, but also in the flood vulnerability planning areas. So for Zone AE, the Trenton Water Works, the Farias Street Pump Station, Clearfield Avenue Lift Station, the Trenton Transit Center, as well as portions of several bus lines. And then in the vulnerability planning area, that also adds the Trenton Fire Emergency Services Engine 9, and a few more bus lines. I just want to say it's not the entire bus line, but elements of it, which are important for evacuation and other economic features for the residents. And the other area we looked at were cultural resources, so historic properties and historic districts. So there were significant impacts for the Berkeley Square Historic District. There were an increase of 81 properties that would be impacted, and the Trenton Ferry Historic District added 63 properties. So historic properties are, and cultural assets are especially challenging for mitigating because you can't elevate them or move them or do, take a lot of precautions without impacting the integrity of the historic property. So it's an area that's important to look at for the city. And next, we looked at community access. So that's more facilities like schools, childcare centers, churches, municipal offices. And that again identified several community assets that needed to be addressed as part of the planning process. And the next is ecological resources. So that includes resources like, that support wildlife, provide environmental services of wetlands, trees. And so the tree canopy, and we'll talk about the tree canopy again a little bit later, is going to be inundated 56, by 56%. So the acreage is, the acreage that will be increased will be by 56% for the tree canopy and 1% for wetlands. Any questions? That's a lot of information, and there's a lot, lot, lot more information on, online and in the map packages, and, as well as in the interactive map. So you can turn on and off all these layers to see how they all interact and play out.
Any questions, board members, at this point? Continue.
Next, we wanted to talk about temperature, increase in temperatures. So we mapped urban heat islands and identified areas in the city that experience a greater than average temperature during the heat events. Okay, so you have one of those maps as well. So you can see the red areas, the dark red areas are areas that are much hotter than the rest of the city during, during those events. And then the next map is the urban heat island and tree canopy. So obviously, trees have a lot of many wonderful qualities, and one of them is providing shade and cooling areas, urban areas. And so as you can see, the areas that have a significant tree canopy are not the areas that have the high severity for heat island.
And, you know, not to give a spoiler on the action items that we're going to talk about next, but obviously, one of those items is to increase the tree canopy in these urban heat island hotspots. And the city is working with New Jersey Conservation Foundation and a bunch of nonprofit partners, including the Watershed Institute, to plant a good number of trees. including the Watershed Institute, to plant a good number of trees, 1,000 trees through one particular grant, and there's quite a number of other efforts underway to increase the tree canopy. So just wanted to kind of point out that as we're looking at these areas of concern, there's also efforts underway already to address them.
Yes, and interestingly about tree canopy is that it's impacted by flooding and temperature. So there are a lot of, there's a lot of things happening to trees at the same time. So protecting them, identifying appropriate species, is all part of the careful balance. So that is the very, very brief overview of the vulnerability assessment. So we went, we, there's a lot more detail and analysis and information in the report, as well as the maps, but we wanted to sort of give you a high-level overview of where the areas that were identified that needed to be addressed with resilience actions. So, and as we mentioned, there was a significant amount of public outreach with community members as well as sort of very targeted interviews with different departments of the city and department staff to identify what they are currently doing, what they wish they could be doing, what areas are impossible to do for various reasons. And all of that information also got filtered into the actions and overlaid with where the impact areas are going to be. And so the actions were, that were developed, fell into four different categories. So there were planning and policy, physical works, emergency planning, communication and training. And so through that process, for planning and policy, there were actions related to community engagement and social equity, post-disaster recovery, planning, data and information, and policy and regulations. And so that is, that is everything from developing a post-disaster recovery planning for a neighborhood that potentially could experience significant impacts, to updating flood damage prevention ordinances, to identifying a data, comprehensive data management strategy that different departments could have access to during climate events, aligning funding programs for remediation and resilience for contaminated sites. So that's sort of, that's where a lot of those actions live. In terms of physical works, we broke it down further into critical facilities, critical maintenance and upgrades, green infrastructure, tree maintenance and water management. So in that, that includes everything from installing backup power sources at critical facilities, protecting critical assets by elevating mechanical systems or mitigating whatever impacts might be happening, doing critical maintenance and upgrades to a lot of the aging infrastructure, doing, developing green infrastructure projects throughout the city to address some of the stormwater runoff, tree maintenance, installing backflow preventers on, and flood vents in basements, so spanning individual to community to city level projects. In terms of emergency planning, emergency management preparedness, so flooding, public health and vulnerability of vulnerable populations, so improving housing conditions, reducing homelessness, addressing needs of elderly populations. In terms of public health, developing policies for protecting workers outdoors during heat events, developing heat emergency response plans, increasing green spaces for mitigating impacts of heat events. In terms of flooding, sort of maintaining road safety with regular snagging programs, compliance with flood insurance programs, and developing, and re-establishing a lot of the emergency management and preparedness. So expanding the cooling center network, encouraging stormwater, different stormwater runoff management practices, prioritizing sustainable building materials that would be, that are adaptable for flooding and other impacts. So things along those lines. And then in terms of communication and training, this is actually a conversation we had earlier. So one of the challenges is that there is often a lot of conflicting information before, during and after climate events, and making sure that there is a standardized opportunity and communication that is being communicated across different departments to different populations with different language needs is an important element. Developing and standardizing tech, a tech system throughout the city, working to identify gaps in staffing throughout different departments, so making sure that there is a certified floodplain manager, acquiring the necessary equipment for different departments, providing training for disaster response protocols, and conducting regular training exercises. So that is, as I mentioned, a very brief overview of what's included. And I guess if I want to open it up in case anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Any more members have questions or comments?
That's a good question. So let me talk about where we are in the process now, what's left to do, and what's going to happen going forward. So part of the reason for this process is that the vulnerability assessment itself is now a required element of master plans in the city of Trenton, in the state of New Jersey. So we have to adopt this, or a revised version of this depending on the comments and the level of city council of your, of your will. We have to adopt a vulnerability assessment as part of the master plan of the city of Trenton. So we would like to adopt it in all this whole plan. So what's going to happen is that our public comment period ends March 1st. We will take the public comments, come back, revise our draft. We are also taking comments from the city departments, all those types of things. And we will come up with a final resilience plan by March 31st. At that point, BRS is going to be taking on its responsibility to make sure that this gets passed, but get back to you in some fashion. We don't know the mechanics of who's going to be presenting that to the board or how exactly that's going to work, but we are committed to getting this adopted. I do want to make a couple of comments about something else, a couple of other things in the plan, just to make sure that you're, that you're aware of them. There is one piece of data that you have not heard us present today. Many of you heard in past presentations, the absolute railing about the need for this DOT data that we did not have and absolutely needed. And we got it, and we think it's jock for many, many reasons. Basically, the DOT data shows a huge portion of the city as a potential flood risk. We don't believe that that's accurate. The DOT sends us caveats saying that they don't believe that this data is accurate. I never believed the DOT, that's my policy, but we, but I do trust our engineers at Princeton Hydro, and they say the same thing. We could receive feedback from the Jersey TEP that they think that part of the issue may be that the Delaware River itself isn't accurately modeled in the modeling, so that the inputs aren't accurate. We've heard that there may be other issues with groundwater and how groundwater is looked at in these models that we don't, we're not taking account of the sewer systems yet. So we don't think that the data is accurate. Now, I will tell you a funny story. Last week, I gave a presentation to a class at Rutgers University on presenting data to decision makers, presenting scientific data to decision makers. And I used this data as my case study, and we talked about it for about 15 minutes. And at the end of my presentation, I asked the students and the other, and the other panelists, how many of you would share this data with your community? And not a single one raised their hand. Well, we're sharing it with the community. We decided that, you know, we don't want to caught being accused of not disclosing things, we don't want to be accused of hiding anything. The data does exist, so we're not hiding it. So what we've done is that we put it in appendix in the back of the report, it is there, it is there with all the caveats that we have. Committee members can take a look at it if they want to take a look at it. We do not think that it is accurate, but we are not going to promise anybody that, you know, they're completely safe. And maybe it's a good, it's a good, that map is a good warning to all of us that nothing is ever completely safe. But we don't think the modeling is accurate, and we're not basing our planning on it. But we wanted to disclose that, we wanted you to be aware of it, and we want you as more members to be able to answer questions about it. If anybody comes along going forward saying, what the hell is this map? We don't understand this, why is it here? So you can tell them, we're disclosing all the data that we have, we don't think this is accurate, and we have good reasons to believe that it's not accurate, we're happy to talk about that more. If you look at our final set of actions, what you've seen here today is a very, very, very short list of a huge section of actions. And quite frankly, we've gone to each of the individual departments to talk about these actions, and in each and every one of these cases, they bore, we bore them to the point that they have thrown us out. So we did not want to go to you and go through all of these actions for all of the departments because, again, you would throw us out, George would get very testy. Kathy's really nice, she would be okay with it, so it's bad. But we, but we are, I think one of the things that we do want to do is talk about if there are any climate risks in the city of Trenton that are specific, of specific interest to people in this room, that you want to talk more about and talk about your issues with them, I think that's relevant. The Watershed Association is here, they may want to talk about, Watershed Association will open climate change issues to all of us and we can discuss these things. This is a meeting for discussion. So if you have issues, concerns about climate change in any way, shape, or form, this is the meeting to be talking about them.
Thank you. I guess, is, I mean, you guys are planners, the answer is probably no. Do you think there's a way to streamline a lot of this data for, for more of a general population, for, basically for the local Trentonian to understand? Is there a way that we can, this can be sort of a one-page or a two, you know, basically a short version of this? Because I feel like that would be helpful.
Yeah, we gave you a lot of information, we understand that. So what, what we did, and it's on the website that you have the link to, that the plan is looking at, there is an interactive mapping tool there, so that anybody can go in, and we tried to make it really user-friendly, so you can kind of flip through the different areas, you can look at what you want, you can scroll in, check out different areas in the city. And, you know, the objective was to make it really accessible to male and street, you know, that you don't have to have a planner's license to follow. Right, and it's mobile-friendly. We also are breaking down the recommended actions by city department, and once this is finalized, we will be providing each of the department directors with a cheat sheet of recommendations that fall within their particular department. In the report that you can access online, the matrix includes a column for which departments are likely to be, have ownership of particular recommendations. So that's a way that it can be viewed in its entirety, but then we will also break it out into individual fly sheets for each department.
I think that if you were sharing this with somebody in your community, when you were trying to tell them about this, and you wanted to share what is, you know, the, break it down as dumb as possible, I think the two maps that I would share is the first one, which is the flood vulnerability area, and tell people that if they're in their flood vulnerability area, they need to be thinking about flood insurance for their homes, they need to think about future permitting issues that may happen. That is, that is now, that is, that is the area that is very similar, going to be identical or very similar to the new flood resilience area for the state of New Jersey, and there's going to be new regulatory stuff for that, for that area. So I would share that map, and I would share one map about temperature in the city in order to talk about trees and ground cover and all the things that are getting, and urban heat island effect. So take, take the first map about temperature and share that map. Those are the two maps that I would share with people if you really want to boil it down and say, this is what we're talking about.
Right, so I apologize, I think that there's an updated version of that map that tells you the, the scale of different percentages. And it's, I believe they picked a day in July. But I will provide you with an update in the, in the...
I was just curious.
In the vulnerability, I know, and I have had this conversation many times, and I don't want to scare you wrong, but I think it's like, maybe, I don't want to, I don't want to be on the record with the wrong information. But I will look it up before the end of the meeting.
Relating to that, the heat island, is it based on a single day or is it based on a week, a month?
So the way that it works is that they pick a day and, you know, figure out what the temperature is in the city, and then identify where the temperature is higher than that average temperature. So if, so does that make sense? So it's relative to whatever the temperature is. It doesn't matter what the temperature is, it's the increase in temperature in those areas that are, that are darker.
How impacted is it by things that are happening just in that day? Like, I don't know, wind or other things that, you know, maybe it hit a different day, it's going to be different?
Yeah, so the things that are taken into consideration are, obviously, trees and shade, but also building materials, like some cities have a lot of areas that absorb heat, and so it's an urban heat island effect. So areas that don't have open spaces, don't have shading, that have blacktop roofs, that have older buildings that are not, that are, that hold on to temperature. So there are many different elements that contribute to the increased heat.
Okay.
I have two questions. One of them is, I know you said there was Spanish interpretation available for the presentation, is there Spanish interpretation available at the public meetings? And I noticed that the site isn't in Spanish either.
Correct. So there were interpreters at the public meetings, and their presentations have been trans, the presentations that are posted have been posted in English and Spanish. So if you go to like the public meeting, public input page, there's a Spanish and an English version of surveys and the presentations.
What about the maps?
Not the maps. So we were told that there's a way that, there's an extension in the way that you look at the website that automatically translates the information in the, in the mapping portion.
Good.
Sorry.
It's okay, I know. And my other question was about one of the cooling, cooling centers, which is Trenton High West. I noticed that it was a big, sorry, it was highlighted in yellow, which means it's flood planning area. I think my concern is if the construction takes place during the summer, and that's the only cooling center for quite a while in that area. and that's the only cooling center for quite a while in that area, do we plan to make like another cooling center? Is that up to you guys, accessible now?
Yeah, so, well, that's not up to us, but certainly the department heads that we spoke with are aware of the need to have a cooling center and at least, at least one cooling center in each ward, and to have that, you know, accessible at all times. So if there's construction ongoing in one cooling, at a cooling center, you know, I, I believe that the intent would be to identify a different location that could function as a cooling center during that period. Thank you.
Related to Link's earlier question, yeah, I think it'd be helpful if there was some sort of snapshot, maybe per ward.
Per neighborhood?
Yeah, per neighborhood, there'd be too many, but something that was like a one-page thing. If you live in the north ward, these are the concerns you should be aware of, something.
Like that.
Because, I mean, I'm a planner, I like maps. I would have no trouble going on the map and doing it, but I know a lot of people who, they can't make headspace of a map even if they've lived somewhere for their whole life.
So we can certainly do that. We did in the in-person public meeting that we had. We did blow up the maps by ward so that it was easier to present. So we actually do have that information. It is in the, I think it might have been the second public meeting presentation that is in the website. We can pull those out as kind of a fact sheet by ward. You know, just label it as such and highlight it on the website. So we can sort of, yeah.
Thank you, I think that'd be helpful. Just a couple of questions on implementation. I know you mentioned that you organize actions by the responsible city agency, right? Are there some actions that are county or state jurisdiction? If so, those identified?
Yes, absolutely. You know, climate change doesn't pay attention to municipal boundaries. There's certainly a lot of upstream conditions that impact a trend's vulnerability. And, you know, it's, it takes a regional and in some cases a statewide approach. So yes, some of the recommendations do involve county or state level, and that is flagged as well. And we did meet with the county and the state to talk through our recommendations. And I know that Mercer County right now is undergoing that hazard mitigation planning process. And, you know, so that will be, this information will also be communicated to them through that process.
And for the proposed actions, is there any estimate of cost or timeline?
So for each action we identified, we, we didn't do a cost estimate, like it's going to be this much dollars, but sort of like a Yelp restaurant review. We have, you know, the one-dollar sign to the three-dollar sign, kind of giving an idea. Same thing with the timeframe, long, a long-range goal, a medium-range goal or short-range goal for each of the actions.
The matrix also includes potential funding sources for, for those actions.
Great, thank you.
I have that answer, but the temperature.
Oh, yeah.
So mild, the yellow is about 1% above city average. Mild to moderate, 1 to 2%, uh, 2 degrees, I say 1%, degrees. Moderate is 2 to 3, moderate to high is 3 to 5, and severe is 5 to 8 above city average. So whatever the city average is, those areas are hotter.
The city average is based on you, X number of recorders, and it's, how do you calculate average?
So they do satellite-based thermal readings?
Okay. Board members, any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Do you feel like you reached a good number of, like, what was the turnout for community engagement? Do you feel like you still would like more? I know that we're open for public comment, like, how actively should we share this?
Well, we'd love you to share it as widely as possible. We, we do feel like we reached a good number of people. We had agreed participation in the first virtual meeting where we talked about the vision. We had a really great in-person participation citywide where we talked about the vulnerability analysis. And then we did extensive outreach in the island, two walking chores and a series of conversations. And then we also did another walking chore in East Trenton in that area that has, is subject to flooding. So we did reach out a good number of people throughout the course of this planning process. But again, in terms of getting feedback on the report itself, we would, we would love for you to share it widely so that we can get as much feedback as possible.
Additionally, we have many recommendations and actions relating to the city doing a lot of communication about this. So we're providing sort of the source material for ongoing communication and resources for, for the city. So it's more than just the actual plan, but the ongoing climate information.
So it definitely started out at its peak with a number of people engaged, and each engagement subs with an engagement, we definitely have fewer people. So I, which is a good reason for you all to be sharing this as widely as possible, because I don't want, you know, there's always a tension in planning about, we want as much community engagement as possible and as many opportunities for feedback, but not everybody knows people don't want to engage five times in the same plan. So this is the time to come back to everybody and say, "This is the report. Tell us what we did right, tell us what we did wrong, what did we, what did we miss? We want to hear from people about this plan." Unfortunately, the amount of public engagement that we can do at this time is very limited due to the lack of a planning department for the city of Trenton. So we're doing our best to get this out there, and we do depend on you guys to share these things. It's really important for us.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any comments or questions? Come on down. If you can, please state your name.
My name is Berger Dickmullin. I'm president of the Trenton Council of Civic Associations, as well as the president of the Island Civic Association. So for a lot of these issues, I was very much involved in what these, these folks were doing. And I just want to say, I want to commend them for an exceptional job at engaging people on the island. We did one of the tours, we did at least one or two sessions with just people on the island saying, "Here's what we're finding, what are your recommendations and the like?" I had the opportunity to frankly skim the report. Over the past couple of days, I have not read all of the pages. But what I am struck by is not the information about how much the island is at risk. We got that. I was struck when they told us that under the new expected thresholds for flooding, that much of the west ward, west of Catwallow or Park would be in a flood zone, and we need to plan for that. That was a surprise at the time, I now understand it much better. But what I am struck by in my reading today are the recommendations that are speaking to the need to, to address critical infrastructure, particularly around just odd things. We know about the waterworks beyond the Delaware River and about if it goes under, it doesn't work, we got that. But it's all of the other things, the heat centers, for heat relief centers that don't have backup power, the police departments and the fire department offices that don't have backup power, that the places that are not air-conditioned that they need to be air-conditioned. There are some critical things that the city could do now to mitigate the problems that might occur five years or 10 years down the road. That need, that's, you know, that's the top line from my perspective of how we, how we as a city can invest in the structural issues as they occur. And they include a lot of things, I don't remember them all off the top of my head, but there are some very specific actions that the city can do to improve the likelihood that the city survives a catastrophic event. And we've got problems on the island, we have flooding and all that, I got that. And no surprise that, yeah, that the water goes up. But for the rest of the city, we need to be sure that the rest of the critical infrastructure is in place. That's all I have to say. I want to thank the team here that has worked on this for a year or a half, two years. It's, it's really been a large, large effort. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other members in the public have comments or questions?
Hello, my name is Kendra McCoy. I'm the Community Engagement Manager for the Watershed Institute. And I just want to say, good job to BRS. I'm really impressed with your work, but as always, I have a couple of comments and questions. One is, as you guys are looking to do Spanish translation for various aspects of the plan, my colleague Lucia Middleton is, has done a lot of research with Spanish translation. I just want to caution you guys to look into colloquial language that differs from language to language. She's been doing a lot of research related and given some presentations on it. I'll shoot you the presentation, Leah, because I was really surprised about some of the innocuous language that it can exist and has very different meaning in different cultures. I am interested in seeing the map of the stormwater storage for the Assam Pink Greenway. I was speaking to a member of the public who I consider reasonably well-heeled, and she was given the impression that there was no stormwater storage. So I just wanted to be able to follow up on that. Regarding some of the internal work that Trenton is looking to do about the flooding issues, I applaud it, but as people before me had said, there are some things that just can't be accomplished within the city limits, and that means there has to be a regional approach. The Watershed Institute has actually been convening the Assam Pink Watershed Work Group, which is all the towns that are within the Assam Pink Watershed, which Trenton is one of them, to discuss regional planning and the new MS4 permit. We are having regular meetings, so we met in September, we just met in February, and we're looking to meet again in March, April. I would love to see more of a Trenton representation there. And I just want to point out that I think it's great that several of the action items address how ordinances need to be developed or updated to protect against climate change. And I want to highlight that the Watershed Institute has modeled stormwater ordinances and modeled tree protection ordinances that Trenton could look at to pull from. And thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name's Brad Stein from the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, and I echo, I applaud the effort that's gone into this. You mentioned that there'd be training as part of the finalization, there's different training. So I just wanted to see, how can, is there training specific to the planning board? How can the planning board, you know, there's, it's a massive amount of recommendations. How can the planning board implement that? How can they put, the next time a big developer or re-developer is standing in front of them, how can the planning board have the knowledge to be able to ask the right question and ask the right follow-up question so that, you know, they're not just hearing what the consultant for the developer is saying, but can come back and say, "Wait a minute, we're spending all this money for backup generators, all this money to raise infrastructure, the city's doing its part. As you're coming in to invest in our communities, how can we do, make sure you're doing your part too?"
So there's a few parts. When we've been focusing on training, a lot of the focus on training is the need for training amongst city employees. There is a lot of regulatory burden for, for hazard mitigation and flood protection that, where there's, where there's levels, where there's education needed across different departments. For NFIP, for National Flood Insurance Program compliance, for hazard mitigation compliance, for the way systems interact with each other, there's a lot of training that's needed. So that's been a large part of the focus. As a second part of this, of training, there is a curriculum that's been developed by BRS as part of this thing, as a curriculum for students. We can talk more about that, and that's part of the training as well. I don't think that we include in here a training for planning board about more general flooding issues. Part of that is, I think that we've done some of that over the course of this process as we've done different engagements. We've had, we've done some of that training for community members about what are different flood zones, what do those flood zones mean, all those types of things. It still has, so that's been part of our process as well. So like at our first, at our very first community meeting, we actually had definitions handed out for everybody, and we went through those things. And people could actually reference their definitions back and forth as we went through the community meeting, that has been, has been part of our process. There is obviously a continuous need for more training, and we should probably focus on additional, maybe additional options, specifically for additional planning board trainings that are, that could be useful or pointing people towards additional resources for private participation in that kind of training.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have a board engineer who I don't think they're here today, but they would be able to weigh in and give their expertise on some of these matters, right?
So the board engineer is really focused on a few things. Number one, there, and the biggest one being stormwater specifically. So any given site there, but it's focused on two parts of stormwater. Number one, we are bound by state law to be compliant with state climate, storm, stormwater regulations. That is especially true for larger sites that are regulated by the municipal state stormwater ordinances and have all kinds of requirements for green infrastructure. We have had a few attempts to, I got that, not the municipal ordinance. This has been one of my major failures as a planner of the city of Trenton, is not being able to get that done. Despite many, many people offering resources and help to us, over time, we haven't gotten it done. That is important to do, partially because one thing that this, this board has identified is a desire to have better stormwater regulations for smaller developments, which is not a requirement of the state's stormwater standards. The state's stormwater standards will start kicking at, I think is it quarter of an acre, half an acre, a quarter? A quarter of an acre. That's a bigger site than a lot of what we have in the city of Trenton. So we want to, we want to have sort of smaller sites, some regulation for stormwater. So it's partially, it's a function of that. And then for smaller sites, our engineers are paying attention to what's the topography? Where is the water going? What's the runoff going to be? Those types of things. There is some attention, on smaller sites, we have not been requesting green infrastructure. It's something that we can do theoretically. We do have the Complete Green Streets Ordinance where we look at our, that includes requirements for green infrastructure. So that is something that's been adopted by law. We can take a look for how we want to better implement that in our planning board applications. I don't necessarily think that we've, that we've done a good job yet of implementing that. I will say that one resource that the city is going to be receiving is assistance from Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission for additional transportation planning assistance. They want the Complete Green Streets Design Ordinance and are very keen on getting implemented better. And that does include the green, the green streets part and the green infrastructure part of it.
What do you think is the reason Trent doesn't have more stormwater regulations?
It's political or there's some things, because I didn't do it.
There's more to it, isn't it? Political or economic, other things? You allow your play.
So we had, so for, for those who, who don't, who want more information than just leaving self-deprecating and funny, we made a major attempt to adopt a new state stormwater, a new stormwater ordinance in 2019. We did this right before the new state stormwater regulations came into effect. We took a look at the new regulations, we tried to fit the new regulations into what we had prepared as an existing plan. We tried a couple of times at that, it did not work. We were later told by the state that the way that we were trying to go about updating our, or the plans that we did was never going to work. We should have been doing it the other way around, of taking the model ordinances from the state and from Watershed Association and those type of types of organizations, take, take those model ordinances and then try and put our Trent spin on those things. Again, some of them, they do it that direction, which wasn't what we thought of doing. And then we just got bought down in other projects. It is still a project that is useful for us to think more about stormwater. I will say that managing stormwater is very important for us, and it's critical, especially in smaller storms for mitigating damage. On for larger storms, for the catastrophic storms, that's only, that's only going to get us so far. You know, storm, better stormwater protection is not going to save the island. So I think we need to talk about, you know, those catastrophic events as well as, you know, the small-scale stormwater stuff, that, what does make a difference?
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, members in the public? Anything from board members, other city staff? Oh, a question I had. Oh, a question I had. Are there action, the proposed actions, or any prioritization about things that, you know, need to happen in the next five years, or things that are helpful, but can be pushed further down?
Yes, there are some critical facilities and critical maintenance updates that need to happen, including backup power generation, et cetera. So there are some implementation, there's some implementation that needs to happen yesterday. But all of the actions are designed and considered in terms of protecting life and safety of the population, so I don't know.
But is there no guide of like, where to start?
Well...
So we had this conversation, and a bunch of times, and when we came to the conclusion of, is that in this city, the way things work is that actions happen when somebody's interested and they've got money. And no matter what you need to flag prioritization actions, it's not functional in terms of implementation. So the best thing we can do is highlight for the individual departments what their responsibilities are, and get that to the departments, and then they can flag these things when money comes in, because that seems to be the driver of why things happen. You can yell and scream about, this is the most important thing as much as you want, it doesn't, it doesn't, if they need all of them, that would be foreign city plans. So we thought, so we did not conclude a prioritization framework. I mean, some of the key departments know what their priorities should be. And we don't think that there's anything in the plan that's like, surprise, this was important. We think it's, you know, the water filtration plan needs to be protected, we know this. But places where there are such populations of people, where there's senior buildings and all that kind of stuff, the health department is very well aware of the need to provide better, to provide, you know, services for them. So we don't think that, you know, if we're spending our time on prioritization action matrix, there really wasn't more than time for this.
Okay. Last call, comments, questions?
This is similar to my previous question, but it's about the national shelter system facilities, of which there are two that we see that have high heat and might need floods in the riverine planning area. Is there a plan to identify other potential shelters?
So in the recommendations, we are recommending that the departments identify those critical facilities that are at risk and come up with plans for what to do, you know, alternate locations. So, yes, thank you.
No other comments or questions? I think the board members here will try to share with our networks, and then I'll give a closer reading and give a lot of comments. Yeah, I'll comment on the maps. Yeah. And so from us tonight, you're not looking for any vote or anything, just, okay. Great, thank you. Moving on.
Thank you all. So I put this on the agenda as an LDO update issue, but really it's a transition issue for us. As many of you are aware, my last day working for the city of Trenton is February 23rd, and I don't have anybody to hand off a lot of my projects to. So I decided I'm handing some stuff off to you as our planning board. So I want to go through a few things that we should be doing as a city in terms of updating our plans and ordinances, with the hope that we'll keep track of this going forward and reminding people that are coming in about this need. So first up, we do have a newly adopted land development ordinance. That ordinance is, I would say largely working as intended. As we've seen cases come in and we've seen how they're applied, the LDO is working as intended. We are seeing, getting the results out of it that we want. That does not mean that we did a perfect job writing the LDO. We know that because I was one of the writers of the LDO, so it was never going to happen that it was going to be perfect. So we have, I have a few things that evidensify this problem there is, that should be taken a look at. I would like you to think, some of these are just relatively easy ones, and some of them actually require some thought. So the first one is, in our, in our LDO, we have rules for what happens if you take a single-family home and convert it into a multi, into a two or three-family home. There are standards for sizes in there, and bedroom size and all those types of things that don't occur in other parts of the ordinance. And we did that to give a little protection to single-family homes to make sure that they're not getting chopped up into little bits, because that's been a problem sometimes in the city of Trenton, is that they just, you know, would take existing single-family homes and they get chopped up till forever. There are many places in the city of Trenton that were single and two-family zones that are now permitting multifamily. So what happens to those single-family homes within the context of those zones now that multifamily is permitted requires some thought. So in our regulations, we have rules for what happens if a single family goes to a two-family or a three-family. It doesn't say anything, however, of now that it's a two or three-family, what happens to that home? So theoretically, you could take a single family, convert it to a two-family home, now it's a two-family home, and now it's unregulated, which I don't think is the intent of the ordinance. I don't necessarily know how to address that either. It requires some thought. But I think that this is something that is right in the gear of the planning board for you guys to think, take, give it some thought, and how do we want to protect these areas? Do these require protection? You know, we need to, you know, as we see these cases go in front of us, it may, it's going to require some finessing. Second is the RM1 zone. RM1 is residential medium one. In this area, we have a conflict here. So if you read the description of the zone, and it says that row homes are a targeted use of the zone. If you read the design table, there's a design standards in there for row homes. And then you go to the, to the use table, and row homes aren't permitted in the district. So that's an obvious conflict. This has already come up, there are, as a conflict issue for developers, they don't know what to do with this. RM1. I will tell you that the, most likely this came out of when we'd originally done the plan. We had three, we had three residential medium zones, one, two, and three, and we consolidated to two, because we really didn't think they were necessary. And I think this got lost in the shuffle.
So you have the design standards, but you have the design standards for uses not permitted?
Correct.
Well, still not permitted.
Correct. It's absolutely not permitted, but it does beg the question of if a developer wants to build that, you know, they are conflicting guidance in the ordinance for, you know, and so the conflict should be resolved in the ordinance. We should update the ordinance to say, to either say that it's permitted or to say that that's not the targeting use of the zone. In looking at, so I took a look at it, in the master plan, in a brief cursory update, it looked like the master plan did not intend for these areas to permit row homes.
Michael, can you just go back, what refers to the targeting use of, in the zone?
So in the zoning districts, in the chapter on residential, on residential, each of the residential districts has a description. And in the description for RM1, the description specifically calls out row homes as an intended use of the district.
Yeah, that's problematic.
So that's problematic. So we think, looking at the master plan, I took a brief look at a couple of zones, and it looked like the master plan was not intending for row homes to be permitted in this area. Looking at the map in terms of my view of it, and I, you should be aware, I came in after the master plan was done, and my bias is generally towards more density. I don't necessarily think that row homes are a problem in these districts. So I'm leaving you with that as a thought. And as a need, so there's a need to update these. You can decide as a board which direction you want to go with them. I'm not going to necessarily say that one, that definitely one way or the other is the right way to go. I'm just providing with the information to make up your own minds about that district, but you should take a look at it and think about what that district really should be. So the next time that the LDO is updated, we can fix that issue. Third thing is a issue, it looks like some chapters got moved around, so a lot of chapter references in the ordinance are incorrect. So for example, in chapters four through seven, which are the descriptions of the districts, they refer to later chapters for design standards. So the chapter, so it will refer to chapter 11 for parking, chapter 12 for landscaping, and so on and so forth, except the chapter numbers that they're referring to are incorrect, or a chapter off. What's that? So it's something that we need to be, that should be fixed in the next round of updates. Finally, one major mistake that I found is in the, we made an update in this new LDO that churches should be, are permitted use in virtually all districts, in any district that permits residential. We did that in conformance with federal law. In many, many towns, they make them conditional in all districts, but that did not make, the way they do that most times did not make sense for us. And we thought it would, to be safer under federal law, we should make them permitted in every district, except that we messed up, and they are not permitted in the TOD districts, which do permit residential. It's an oversight, churches should be permitted there. One hundred percent should be permitted there, the boards should interpret them. I think that the boards, according to federal law, should interpret them as being permitted there. It would be grievous, it would be pretty grievous to turn them down in those areas, given the rest of our laws. But it's something that needs to be updated in the ordinance. So those are four things that I wanted to call out. Globally, we should be thinking about updating our LDO probably once every year or two, based upon how things are going. That should be a regular process of the city. We should not be doing 10-year updates of an LDO or what we've done in the past. Our ordinance is in very good shape, and I think we'll serve this city for a very long time, you know, just like a car. If you give it regular maintenance, it'll serve you for forever. If you don't give it the regular maintenance, it'll fall out of line with what we're doing. And so we don't want to lose track of that. So I think regular maintenance is important. I think one part of regular maintenance is the conversation with the zoning board. So the zoning board who sees our D variances, kind of sees much more of the gray areas in our ordinance about where, and will make decisions about, you know, where they want to permit things. The key tool for that is the annual report that the planning board does about all of our cases. There should be a deep look at any D variances that the zoning board does offer and implications of every one of those D variances of the ordinance. And where the D variances are being given, there should be thoughts changed by the planning board about, you know, does that mean that we should be changing our laws to permit certain things? That may be involved, just the annual report, that may involve all this, you know, it may be that there's a presentation once a year by the zoning board about what they're seeing. That might be valuable to the planning board, but that's a conversation that you might want to think about having. I want to, there's a few plans that are upcoming that I want to briefly talk about. So you've heard about the Climate Resilience Plan that is almost done, and BRS is going to find a way to get that done. And in some way, we're going to find a way to get that in front of you guys. We also have the seven transit rates development, redevelopment plans that are also just about done. I'm meeting tomorrow with WRT to talk about the finalization of that plans. I don't know how to put that in front of you necessarily, if there's no body to put in front of you. We have to figure that out. But it's something that you should be cognizant of, so if somebody comes in or you have a conversation with city staff, you know, we need to find a way to get that in front of the board, because these plans are done and they're, we should, they need to be adopted. The last thing I want to mention is the long-term plans. And there's two that we need to be cognizant of. One is the Trenton 250 Master Plan. The Trenton 250 Master Plan, in the master plan itself, has an action that every, in every five years, we should be revising the plan, to do an update on the plan, to understand our matrices and where we're going and what we're accomplishing so far. And really to understand, are we executing this plan as a city? We're now in year seven, and that hasn't happened yet. So what we'd intended to happen in year five was a, basically an additional planning process to do a review of the plan. What's, you know, what have we done, what, you know, what have we not done? Where are we, where are we at as a city? And part of that update should be better matrices for the plan. So we do have a need for somewhat better targets in the plan, I think. For how are we understanding our accomplishments against the plan? How do we evaluate ourselves? Was going to be part of the question for this five-year update. We're at least past five years now, so this is still a need. I will also mention to you guys that we are required by law to update our master plan every 10 years. We have to do an update every 10 years. So if we do it at year seven or eight, we should think about what the schedule should be, because that would cover the 10-year update. You know, if we do it in year 10, you know, in year seven, it covers us. So we don't necessarily have to do an update year eight and then again year 10. So, but some thought has, should be given to what the cycle should be going forward as new planners come in. The last thing I will mention to you that has been a priority for this board for a very long time is the capital improvement plan for the city. We do not have one. This is very bad. This is why we waste money as a city, is because we do not capitalize capital improvement plans. I will tell you that when we started our hazard mitigation plan for the city, we had a consultant come in who gave us forms to fill out. The form came in, filled in automatically that we had a capital improvement plan, because it's so automatic for cities of our size to have that. And I had to uncheck that box, because we don't. This should be automatic as a city, as a function of good government, that we plan our capital resources, plan capital budgets, and have a program in place. This is critical importance. By law, the capital improvement plan is the purview of the planning board. This is your plan to adopt. So we need to, there should be, there are resources available to do it. Marie Richardson had a PAC program, CDBG dollars to do it. We need to come back to finding resources to do that. But you have to, as a board, you need to be insisting that the city move forward with this and find resources to move forward with this. That's all I have to say today. I'll take questions about any of this. I want to make, these are things that I want, thoughts that I want to leave you with.
On the master plan update, you don't need a full update every 10 years, right? Just a reexamination?
It's a reexamination, it's required every 10 years.
Yeah, I've seen some towns have an actual master plan in 40 years. We won't do that, won't wait that long. Any questions from the board? George, do you have any questions?
No, no, I would just add that the board, it is the board's function to do the capital improvement plan, but the board isn't delinquent in not doing that, because it has to be directed, directed to do that by the city. So, and it's a monumental task, if you think about it, to put together a capital improvement plan for all the departments and all the aspects of what the city does. So, yeah, Michael's correct, the city should have one, if they ever want one. This board doesn't, but it'll need a lot of resources to do. So I just wanted to say, in case anybody was wondering, we're not delinquent in doing it, we haven't been directed to do it, so. I would just like to thank Michael for all his time that he's given to the board. He was a great person to work with and a great planner. And I just put on the record here that it's a big loss for the city and big shoes to fill. So I just put that on the record. It'll be there forever, Michael. So if you ever want to dig into the archives, you could, you could find that, because now it's officially on the record.
I second that. Yeah, thank you, Michael, for your work and dedication to the city and to the planning board. I don't know if this format asks, is the city hiring someone? What's, what are we gonna, how do I know if there's another planning board meeting?
The honest truth is, I don't have a good answer for you. I will tell you that the city has put out, has sent planners, they have received resumes. We anticipate that there will be a new director shortly for the departments, and that we are hoping that there will be new planners soon. I don't necessarily have somebody to hand my materials off to. I do not know how the next board meeting is going to happen.
Don't be honest with us, Michael. Just lie to us and make us happy, okay? We all go home happy tonight.
So at this point, we, the assumption is there's no meeting until we hear, otherwise, until we hear him?
So that's not a good assumption. And I will tell you why, which is that we have cases that are scheduled. We have a case, we have a case scheduled for the second planning board meeting in March. And I have other cases that are overdue, and I'm going to be trying to do complaint disreduces next week on cases and signings in the board cases. My responsibility ends, doesn't end until next week, so I'm acting like the city is a normal place.
Is there, is there, is there materials? Is there, is there some material, do I contact?
I don't have answers to that.
Mr. Chairman, just answer that question. The board is going to meet. We have scheduled meetings, we're going to meet. I don't know if we're going to have much business, but we are going to meet. Okay, so that's the, that's our position as the board.
Okay.
This could get interesting.
Yeah.
It'd be good, good to see everybody, but we do have to meet. We, we schedule two meetings a month, but we're required by law to have at least one. So we will have at least one.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? Thank you so much.
Thanks again, Michael.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All right, thanks everyone.